And with that, I'm going to call the Board of Assessors meeting to order for the Town and Demer Scott of number nineteen. All right, are we ready to go? All right, we have a another tax abatement. This is for personal property adjustment. That looks pretty.
This is sort of an upgrade forward.
Yeah, it's the same thing like with this one here in particular is it. As we had him assessed higher, right? So that just comes through as a. Not that one.
Yeah, typically these are driven by the property himself to come in and. I don't remember, I don't know what place one exactly came in, I estimated.
It's about the appreciation difference.
Right, or I say, hey, yeah, you say, hey, this is, yeah, just conversation, yeah, just carry it. Straight forward, all right, I will. Make a motion to approve a abatement for a personal property account eight ninety-six. The amount of one hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. There your second?
Second.
There's been a second, small. Just coagulated here, Dan's over there. All right, thank you, Dan, any discussion? Those in favor?
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn from the assessment.
Second, all those in favor? Okay, and now we're gonna make a motion to, oh, we call the Select Forward Meeting back to order for November nineteenth, so here we go. All right, minutes. Anything noteworthy in the minutes?
Tom.
punctuation? Phrasing, anything?
Actually, I did have a phrase.
Oh, oh.
I'm not gonna. Oh, this, I just thought it was a fun turn of phrase, it's on. It's under Festival of Lights on the next page. Under Roberts, it says while on the spot. Well, I don't know. Well, instead. He wasn't on the spot.
While on the spot, yeah.
Wouldn't imply that.
He was on the hot seat.
He was on the hot seat, great.
I don't know, it's fine, I just thought it, I smiled when I read it.
Yeah.
That was the intention, maybe it was the wrong word.
So witnesses in there.
Potential chair of the Minutes Committee, I make a motion to prove them as written. Leslie's on a hot streak, but it's inevitable that there'll be a failing some, which I'll point out.
It'll be a big one when I do.
Thank you, Tom. There a second? All right, there's gonna second. Any other discussion in the minutes? None, all those in favor? All right, in this past financials, we've had seven years. Hey, go ahead, you want, take a second to take a look at those? Yep. Yep. Gentlemen, now the end here, second to look at the financials, we can discuss amongst ourselves. What's that? Well, we're on, we're in a public meeting right now, so nothing's off the record. She's gonna write it down and we're live on. Like, yeah. There should just be a few folks. We're in public meetings, though.
Yeah, I don't care if they hear.
We can bring it up in, in split more discussion with the. Yeah, so, good, so.
Quick question.
Yeah, which one are you in?
I'm loving into the detail, there's nothing county treasurer for fifty-one thousand dollars. Yeah, that is it. So that was a. A grant that our former police chief had applied for, and I hope you remember statewide, there was some money available for like mental health and physical. Fitness, like well-being, money transfer state through a funded program for first responders.
Oh, yeah.
Jason kind of took the lead as someone from Lincoln County representing all the agencies, so I find which. How many people would be open and interested in participating and they submitted a grant? Well, by default, he's submitting or kind of was awarded to the town to then administer, but that wasn't necessarily the intention that we understood, so. We understood that the county was gonna do that and, but the money came to us via the state by direct deposit, so. This is us giving it to them to administer the grant program as we understood it was to be intended.
Okay, yeah. Moving around.
And they will do that.
That's our understanding. Yes.
And the, and the county's expecting it?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Something basically set up. I think for the summer, but questions, but gave it up with them, but the state. So they're all aware, there's emails that Cheryl had back and forth that showed from the state that this is going to end. Okay, that, that was the route they recommended we take.
Yeah.
And the good news is the state created program, Lincoln County is a beneficiary of such programs.
Yeah.
For first responders.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and so Chief Warlock was just the, the point person on that for the county.
Yeah.
I know it's not something we're prepared to administer and.
Okay, yes. All right, question. Well, Seth? Yeah, yeah, everybody's good, financials. I'll make a motion to, to move payroll warrant number twenty.
Sure.
Thank you, Tom, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor? All right, and AP twenty-one, any other questions on that for we? I'll move accounts payroll number twenty-one.
Second.
Ooh, that was close.
Flip a coin.
That was definitely Andrea's, Andrea, are we gonna give it to Andrea? Andrea's second, if, any discussion, there are none, all those in favor? Okay, good, buddy, yeah, all right. And do we have anybody, any comments, all right, anybody other than the, well, Seth, do you have anything you wanna? I'm trying to put you on the spot, it's going up, yeah, yeah, so. You're the lead, lead reporter back in the corner there hiding too, so. And what do we, what's that?
Two letters.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, you, you've got something over there to give me then.
And so in October, we, we dispersed the, the money using the funds that were requested for the provider agency, we've got two more letters.
Oh, nice.
From benches to table and spectrum generations just saying thank you.
Okay. Yes, pass it to me, yeah, we can, yeah, I said you were passing down the.
Down the back and take a peek at them, yeah, as we go through there, so.
Sound good. Take a look, well, those are getting handed down, and you've got a few things on your manager's report, I trust everybody's got a chance to look it over and. What a lot going on there, so you wanna hit some. Five points, or we can, if anybody has any questions or comments on anything? Any questions or things that dumped out on that?
Um, how's the hiring for the, your task director one? Uh, we have three applicants at the moment, I haven't arranged any interviews yet, but. The Cheryl will try to do that next week before Thanksgiving potentially.
Yeah.
And that was for candidates.
With the goal of having here by the end of the year, yeah, as well. Okay, that's good, and how much of a gap would there be if that's the time?
If that were to be the time, it'd be about three weeks.
Okay.
Before we potentially. But feeling good so far with what we've seen as candidates right now, so.
Good.
Best case scenario, there, there, you know, we find someone who's already doing the job and then the training in the meantime wouldn't be a bad, if there's someone that doesn't have the experience. I was nothing wrong with, but we have to obviously. Work through that, make it feel a little bit different.
Yeah.
And only because I'm just, I'm just curious, any progress on the E D A grant? Remorsement?
Admittedly, I haven't reached out to them since they were.
Anybody there?
But it is on my radar that.
I'm just curious again.
Yeah. Yeah, so where's the honest, about a hundred and. Twenty-ish, I think. Road trip. It's been submitted, it was, no, the last time we had talked, there were a couple longer enclosed out items, to which I believe I sent back.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of. Getting back to my part.
Just while about it.
It's a lot that they do.
The, I know we're gonna talk about the, the E V policy in a minute, but. As I was kind of going through your notes, it occurred to me, does, does an ordinance require a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Tenemently, yes.
But a policy does not.
Policy does not.
So do we have to? Cause the parking is an ordinance, right?
That one isn't by statute that one of the very few, that I think the G A, well. That might, might be the only one actually, that the authority is given to this. For council to be able to amend that one.
Without.
Unless, unless that ordinance was voted in otherwise.
So, so we're not gonna have a problem if we want to approve the E V charger sign and, and have it roll into.
Right. Yeah, I thought, I thought we had to approve the parking and then.
Okay.
Through, through a boat and, oh, interesting, okay.
Okay, great, great.
And those are, they, they're turning at this point? Just waiting for policy approval or, or whatnot. Probably by the end of the week, I just gotta get the accounts set up still on the, on the system back end.
Yeah, but they're, are they all done on that, they, they're all installed on that, it seems, yeah, it looks like they are, just wanna make sure.
Right. Things could be. We just gotta sync our payment and banking information to the company that'll be managing the fee collection, because they'll collect all the fees and then move to our account, the revenue that's up, that, that would be a first.
All right. Do they do, is there a, I mean, this is, there's a percentage for?
They charge a flat fee for the users, you know, whatever rate I reset for kilowatt we get. And then there's all sorts of things we could do on the back end in terms of like the idle rate and fee.
You've got, yeah, there's all good steps.
Investments, I mean, if you add like paid parking, for example, like in an area that you're putting these into, you might include that base.
Oh, why?
Um, you know, we don't have paid parking, so it's not something we're gonna add extra to it. But there's a fee for the user directly to the company that's offering, kind of like credit card. Fees, a lot of places, you know, just speak for the town, like, that's a fee that's passed on to.
It's bad, right?
The customer paying that card, there are other options they could pay, but the law allows, basically doesn't allow everyone to pay for that person's fee process that, so. Be similar to that, if you have direct, that's what they get out of it, plus our, our payment to them to have access.
Yeah, oh, that's good, okay.
Yeah, I think you mentioned the. Parking policy?
The last meeting I had it on there.
Yeah. You wanted to cover that now or later?
Um, it's coming up, well, you've got it in. I don't actually have a. We didn't have, I never bring that back for the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, all right, you have one.
It was in the, on my agenda.
No, it's not.
No, no, there's. There was a reference to it, but.
Right, it was on the, I think it was.
That's my gap.
But there's gonna be an E V policy.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I was pretty sure so.
Yeah, the parking was in the last.
Well, that's the.
Yeah, that's right, the E V one's on there, but the parking one's.
This is the parking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's all right.
As I was getting it mixed up, so.
So Andy, you have. You have the budget, maybe on the third, but we're meeting at the fire station.
Okay.
You're okay.
We couldn't have them yet.
We could have them.
They can see the improvements too.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Space is better than they're gonna. Chief now is gonna start. I know he's been scrambling to impress, so he's gonna move his stuff around a bit, so he tried to.
And he was on the spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was. They're, they're in good shape, I don't know exactly where the decontamination.
First call.
Others, I think they're going up Friday, not that it impacts the inside, but, but it'll help certainly illuminate some of the water that might enter.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, there's been a fair facelift over there internally on that building.
Um, I keep asking you questions. Throw them out there. The two housing brands, I, I, I'm just very interested in them.
Yeah.
So the R F P will go out in January, and, and then I was thinking. How, how many potential units in each one, I was trying to remember. I don't know.
We haven't decided, I mean, one of them is dependent on. The property we've discussed previously, which I.
Okay. Okay, property that is?
Um. Well, it was discussed in the executive session, so, but in terms of like, the public thing at this moment, we don't have that.
Okay, I just, I just would like to know what. I'd love to be more involved in that, so that's my point.
Okay. And then, and then I was just trying to, just kind of roll that forward, so you have an R F P in January of twenty twenty-six, and I was trying to think, when's the first, when, when would occupants be on the other, you're talking.
Yeah, so the, the plan was, I wasn't used with either of these when we submitted, it wasn't to build.
Right.
Right, it's to do an assessment and study on properties that could be, that would be suitable for housing.
Yeah.
And as a conceptual gives, like, the first responder one in particular, and that was the D C B, and, and John had this vision to do something for the workforce for firefighters specifically.
Yeah, that's very exciting.
But it was missing, it was missing, like, if you're asking people to fund it, but it's a grand tour private, whatever, it's just a missing business issue, and so that. In, in both cases, because the Lincoln County model bears off of the D C B one, it was really to create concept, concepts of what it could be, so the scale at which and all of that is part of the process of the public. And.
Isn't that, is that dependent upon location as well in terms of public?
Yeah, right. Okay.
But that, but that one, we know the location.
Right. I mean, the hope with the, with the county one is the funds, that the amount of money we got is that it's not gonna be limited to just one site, and. At this moment, there aren't sites that are, that identified. Truly, yeah, right, we're looking on to try and get interest in one, and it's a matter of working with partners that we've talked to casually over the course of the last year, and to try and lock in. But nothing's been identified specifically as saying we're going for this property, which is why we can't really stay. R F P yet.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
If anyone bidding on this, gonna wanna know exactly which parcels they're gonna be considering, to be able to give us an idea of cost and the scale at which the assessment would be.
Yeah. The. Senateary, we have a product like trustees for a little bit, that's a lot of attention, but. How are they getting along, I see they're, they're working with, I'm assuming this is the same contractor? That's the only one in. They use in the past and. For repairs.
Uh, this is a different one.
Oh, it's a different one, okay.
Uh, with potential contractors, so it's someone who's done work recently for the.
Society.
Oh, interesting, okay. They've done some work in New Capital, uh, they came. Say recommended per se, but I mean, just say, let's give them, let's give them, yeah, talk to the group and, and, so he's a day rate, kind of like the other one that we've used is.
Right.
There's nothing wrong with the one previously, it's just its availability, so.
New York.
Yeah, the state is, yeah, it's just a pretty specialized field, so that's interesting, they have another option, so, okay. Yeah, that's really all I wondered about that, over there.
Right.
So, can I? I see Michael over here, it just occurred to me that, that we, we had talked about a comp plan implementation committee. Wouldn't we standard that, and is, and it's the board that will point it, right?
Yeah, so I guess we have to have more conversation with that, I'm not entirely clear where this is. Strategic plan, so I, I wanna be able to coordinate those two things.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to get some. Right, well, move on, anything else? In Town Manager's Report? Be good, okay. Well, let's move into some official action items here. If you have anything on M C O, you want that?
Uh, the general.
I forgot that was in there, right?
Assembly meeting's tomorrow, I just provide all the information they provided.
Yeah.
For that, maybe, if folks are interested.
Let's look at, yeah, first on the list for official actions, we'd have the. We're gonna pay for this, or? Paid for, yeah. All right, so we have on the agenda highway equipment reserve appropriation for. Payment for the W L two thousand and twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Um, well.
Oh, we skipped over.
Go past the M C O, yeah, I surprised you, this, yeah, and then. Ellen, first one after that, yeah. All the purpley is M C O, yeah.
Your car.
Yeah. Yeah. There we go, we'll start on that one just there, so. We have three payments left, any two payments?
Yeah, I crossed the twenty, twenty-five one off prematurely without your vote yet.
Oh, yeah, okay. I think we worked to approve it, it would be thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollar amount left on. Yeah, okay, good enough, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to appropriate eighteen thousand four hundred dollars from the highway equipment reserve. For F Y twenty-six payment for the W L twenty-eight. There, second. Who got that one? I heard three at once, that's all right, I'm reading. Those, they're all, all right, any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, so, all right. Traffic lights, yeah.
Oh, so.
So we have to pay for this?
Yeah.
I don't know how much it's gonna be.
Too much, we're not.
Well, this is, we're not, we're not the bad one.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I just saw traffic, right?
Oh, right. This one, we do know, that's a, yeah, we'll get to that, that was the more interesting, we'll get to that discussion, well, these both are interesting.
Yeah, this is a change of, a change of function more or less, right?
Right.
Oh, that, right, light is terrible.
The one at Biskie's pretty straightforward, there, the green arrow coming off, a Biskie road turned left on the main street.
Yeah.
Um, pretty sure there's already a hole there, but we had a yellow light displayed, but it requires some changing of the system.
Right, yeah.
We're not trained to do that specifically, and so the idea would be to, this is, just came on. That, you know, feedback and concerns from the community over the last few months, but could we just have a flash yellow for the left-hand turn once Church Street signals for the green circle, because people aren't yielding to go left. So anyone that's coming across Church going out to Biskie has got the right, got the right of way, but people are not yielding, turning left, and so this was just a. Signal proposal to see if we wanted to make that change.
Right.
Um, dollar wise, it's within, it's just because.
Yeah. Yeah.
Making sure that I feel okay about it, I mean, it's not a change to the pattern or anything, it's just.
Yeah, I think, that makes sense. Going through that intersection all the time, so. Um, it, does the. Is the, there's the. Multi-use path that's, that's coming, and it's gonna include a crosswalk there improvement, perhaps?
Cross Biskie and across Main.
So will that impact, it will, it will impact the, the intersection? And will that? In any way, can it impact this decision?
I mean, this is mostly them just getting in and dealing with the computer, I believe.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not at the moment aware that we're having to change out the. The system there, but I'm not remembering if it requires relocation or anything, I mean, that. Asked enough Monday, and I haven't heard back from the state yet, but I'm just, I don't know what the timeline is for going out to bid for construction, at one point it was by the end of this calendar year.
Right.
Um, so I mean, if we have a plant, I just don't remember off the top of my head, it may be called reconfiguring lights and. New, a new system, that, that computer system is older, and I'll tip to the other one in town.
Okay.
They were actually, when they were here doing this, when they were hitting some of the buttons that they normally hit, actually it started making noises, they're not familiar with, you know, usually hearing.
You're laying groundwork with that one.
It just, it just happened to be that, you know, it appeared that the control panel on that. Just went at that moment, and so the lights were on flash for a little bit last week, one day, and.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Company came back and did the change that night, were able to swap out the, the computer component that.
Also, it's already fixed.
Yeah.
So, so a lot of it, yeah, a lot of it's programming, as long as, yeah, you don't have to actually physically move the lights, hopefully not, but. Right, it's just programming, and that means it's, yeah, it's updated.
Right, the other part of that, I mean, whole lower cost estimate from, from them for the, for the Bristol Road one, I'm not recommending we do anything at the moment, I think that one requires more input, more conversation. Uh, but that's a concern that's been raised by the D S A group for over a year anyways. Uh, so they're bringing that, well, I had, or I just said, hey, if you're in town, could you just look at that intersection in terms of like what it might cost to make that a. Exclusive crossing for the pedestrians versus if you're, when you would hit that button to go from. The north side of Main Street to the, to the island there, and you're walking as the people are turning left off of Bristol Road.
Mm-hmm.
And so that presents challenge, same thing if you're going from that to the church, you're walking at the same time, people have the right of, you know, they don't have the right of ways. Drivers, but their light's green to turn left on the Bristol Road, so it created concern and challenge for folks in the community, but there hasn't been an incident though.
There have been incidents.
There has, yeah.
People have been hit?
Yeah, there was one this summer that.
Okay.
Hit in there, yeah.
Okay.
Um, that one, I think that one, and I told them, I said, this really requires some honest look at that, I mean, how would those proposed, proposed changes potentially impact traffic backup at a certain time, heavy use times? Um, you know, it'd be probably, I mean, depends what they said, probably fifteen to twenty-second rate in all directions. Um, it doesn't seem like much, but it's just, that one shouldn't require some additional review.
It's somewhere, it'd be a lot, you know. But that, so you're talking sixteen hundred as opposed to twenty seven, right?
Yeah, the, the budget, budget for twenty-seven hundred for maintenance, so as well within the, yeah. There's, there's no reserve allocation or anything on.
Yeah, you're just lending the, the one at this point.
Yeah. And not even, yeah, and you're, you're asking for motion for change of. The operational scope as opposed to the expendive chair, so I'm very sensitive, I, I don't, I don't think there's any. Reason why. Yeah, any debate on that, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the alteration of the Biskie Road Light. To allow flashing yellow arrow display for the Biskie Road Approach as presented in the Town Manager Memo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Just curious, is there any way to bring pedestrian traffic up Bristol Road to the intersection of Cross Street? Would like a similar pedestrian flashing light we have down by. Um, Rising Tower?
Potentially, Mike, I remember walking that, that day with Jim and. Company, I think we walked up to Cross Street and kind of floated that idea to the gentleman here.
Well, just taking it away out of the direct turning.
Getting it out of the section, yeah.
It's so hard to, how do you get to the other side, you have to walk down the library? Basically to walk across.
Well, the, the issue is being depressed from that, where you're turning in the light area with pedestrian traffic, if you were to take it down Bristol Road. I don't know, couldn't be a hundred feet.
But, for example, if I walk up Church Street and I wanna get to the other, so I wanna go to the bank, your bank, how do I get there? If you, if you eliminate that crosswalk, then I have to walk down to the, basically the library to cross, it's how unsafe it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was, I was looking at that, that traffic turning to Bristol.
You, you were just the, the longer one going.
If I'm looking at the one to the island.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that one. So this is where I think it requires more consideration, and we have it, it was included in the scope of work for the P P I when that.
Yeah.
Planning work gets done to bring in that intersection as part of the plans, as part of construction, it's not part of the construction scope, but as far as the planning goes, we lobbied for that to be included. Um, and so that'll be considered then, I think there's some folks that would hope it would happen, a change would happen sooner.
Yeah. I guess I wasn't viewing it as that Main Street crosswalk, I was viewing it as the crosswalk to the island area, and that's what I thought the problem spot was.
Yeah. No.
Well, it is, that's a function of getting folks to get to Bristol Road.
All of it, yeah, it's all in one, I, I just didn't see the Main Street pieces being a part of that, I get you.
When we walked it last summer or spring, we also talked about. Further up on Main Street, like. The chamber building, there'd be a way to, same, same principle, you get folks further away.
Used to be one either.
But that is how I cross, if I'm gonna cross over and I wanna go to church, I'll, I'll walk up towards the. Same principles, the, the chamber building, and then screwed over there.
Yes, that usually be, they usually be there.
You know, of course, it's illegal, but.
That was on record.
It's safer, it's safer.
These are things that, though we could talk about, have thoughts and suggestions on, like, not being engineers, like.
Right.
That's where it's like, if we're able to get that included in that study, that'll be happening, that's. Well, the best place for that.
The B one?
Yeah, no, the P P I, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, the, the larger question is, did you prioritize pedestrian traffic or vehicle traffic? Right, that becomes the question.
It is, yeah, that's such a heavy traffic, it's just, there's no way to get down the peninsula, that's.
Yeah.
Everything right there, so, yeah.
But the downtown is dependent upon pedestrian traffic.
Yeah. Hundred percent, and then they're looking also at the middle of summer, where we're backing up past Hilltop. Yeah, you know, in traffic, so you're talking about another twenty to thirty seconds.
Somewhere potentially.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's a lot.
No, 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 be there or mine, that's not a disagreement.
Yeah.
But it's definitely a double edged sword.
It's a little bit harder, harder enough to grab. Assuming one person pushes it in a two-minute span.
Yeah.
And whatever the delay is, and when someone pushes it, then they will have fifteen or twenty seconds typically to, however long it would take, I mean, you got, if, if the idea would be to do both, they're pretty wide. Especially the Bristol Road approaches are pretty wide, some are squirreling.
Yeah, you're, you're going the third lane on that, I think you're, if you're at Cross Street, you're in the double lane, plus the.
Just, yeah, you stick up the other line, anyway, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, let's move into, yeah, now, off of that, we've got the. P P I, for one P P I project, so.[1760.54]
Yeah, those just came back, those came back in, I think, September, uh, there was a group, uh, Dan, Michael, and Clark. Um, D O T reviewed for, uh, the responses, and it's just. Which until now, um, but, um, D O T came back and said the contract price that was presented, uh, was. Uh, within the, they gave an estimate of. Thirty fifty-one thousand or something that D O T had shared that it should cost, and can you see it came in at one, hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-two and eighty-four cents? To do that, planning work, um. And so just asking for the board, uh, gives me the authority to sign on their behalf, uh, proceed with that.
Because it's a grant, right?
Um, well, because it's executing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract.
It's, it's fifty fifty.
No, I mean. Oh, it's fifty.
Yeah.
Oh, five.
Yeah, the explanation on the numbers there, that just.
Yeah.
As they presented it in their complete cost profile. Um. You see the total cost of the one hundred and forty-eight, the grant we had gotten was a hundred and fifty. Total for the project, seventy for fifty fifty, so seventy-five thousand is what we put in, seventy-five from the state. And let's see, there's a small, very modest balance there that work with any potential change orders or other items that need to happen.
Were they purposed to the hundred and fifty thousand before they put their bid?
No.
Oh, if they're convening.
I mean, it's very, very. It was public, as, as state plan, public, I mean, yeah, they would have been. Those, why the state does its independent, um, review of costs before we, um, would review and consider. But yeah.
We should have said a hundred, we've got ninety-eight.
It's an interesting process, I mean, not how we typically do it, it's dictated because of the grant type that it is, and that we do the technical review separate from the cost.
Yeah, you have to weigh them first, a little differently.
But yeah, it was public, so they absolutely would have known what the. And have no idea what the other one put it cost higher or lower.
Yeah, the town share, um, that's coming out of the, is that kind of a bond or the sidewalk, okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, our interest in this is real, it's about the pedestrian piece that they, they just said they were going to improvements, and it was mostly drainage and road stuff, and. We started asking the questions about, well, what about the school street intersection, what about the sidewalk from riding tied up to the school and.
Mm-hmm.
All those other things, that we should join the effort and do P P I, and so.
Yeah.
We gave, gave out this pedestrian and sidewalk improvements were kind of the driving factor.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, could you remind me what the scope is of this, uh? Where does this start, where's the?
Um, shit, well. It's the, the scope of construction the state identified was pretty much Church Street where the Chamber Building is, not the intersection, but Church Street where Chamber Building is.
Yeah.
On the Bristol Road, and all the way to N C Hunt Route One.
All right.
And for the planning purposes, we had, again, lobby for them to bring it into that intersection for the sake of pedestrians, because if we were to move, say, the crosswalk in one direction, like up to the Chamber Building and Church. That would have an implication, and we felt it was reasonable to include that in scope of planning for these improvements.
Well.
Well, it's a long time coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made the motion to authorize the town manager to execute the Route One on D, if we could have a steady contract on behalf of the town.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tom, or Dan second, any more discussion?
Any, none, all those in favor? All right, Andy, guess something else to do?
About how we can do any more?
Well, go on to the next one. All right, and this is, uh, this is gonna be Gassner. Gassner Brook Culver.
Yeah, this one's a little, little bit different, um, and that's not just, I mean, we're asking for just the planning, but we're. Granted for the full replacement planning and engineering is part of it, and we haven't had it fully engineered yet. Um, we've had some concepts, we've had some rough. Ideas, you know, not even quite the preliminary engineering yet, so we need to do that. Um, I tried to break out, the numbers we had used, we submitted the grant from twenty twenty-two, um. Uh, Garby Andorski is the most technically qualified, uh, on the review, um, and then they presented us a, uh, cost of their services. To do the funding engineering at seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred thirteen ninety-six cents. Uh, they noted that that didn't include, uh, many of the right-of-way and acquisition fees that may or may not, um, be borne in this. And there's four properties, so it's a little count, hoping that we can work with property owners there, that most of what we would need on those stream beds are not, you know. Very restricted in what they could be used for building, and two of them are pretty steep slopes. Um, so hopefully we can get cooperation there, and I mean, it doesn't include their, we asked for it, but they didn't provide the cost of the construction oversight yet, because it. It'll depend on what the D O T drives, is a, is a minimum requirement, which I don't know yet. And I tried to estimate those two pieces there to look at the total professional costs, and puts it about one fifty-five. And tried to increase the construction cost values from twenty twenty-two, and from twenty twenty-two to today, I mean. Know what the market and the prices have done, I don't know that I've done enough there, um, all to say. We're gonna have to most likely utilize additional funding, um, from what we originally had anticipated about this award and submitted and got this. And the award was for nine hundred. Total amount for the project when we submitted it was for nine hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred was. The grant award, our match was the twenty percent, the one ninety-six, two hundred, and we were using that, I believe, from the bond.
No, that was from the bond there.
Um, so we have the ability to use more, whether it's from the bond or from another reserve line. We don't know what the construction costs are, yeah, I'm just trying to give you the heads up on, on some of that, and we'll have to proceed with the engineering, um, to get this.
Right.
Going.
I make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize town manager to execute the Castner Brook Culver replacement contract for engineering services on behalf of the town. Right, in motion, second? Dan seconds, any discussion? Any, none, all those in favor? But hey. Lots of stuff happened.
All right.
It's interesting seeing the stuff we talked about for while, and all of a sudden, oh, please move it.
Something really gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah. Moving, so, all right, we've got the, uh, A C O contracts, um.
The per hour, per hour cost for nickel bar, I think.
It did?
It's three twenty-five, I think. Most paid kit.
Yep, she's taking the page. Andy, you know what the differences are between last year and this year?
Um, most the hour, I mean, I agree, I think it was. Because she, yeah, it's only a buck or two, it was a dollar. But I had folded, I didn't write it down. I think what's funny.
Do we have any idea what the expenses per year for us?
Uh, yes, but, um. We've gotten a note earlier this calendar year that they were gonna be tracking time a little more diligently, um, okay. It wasn't unique to us, but in all the towns, and they just acknowledged that there were some missed. Billables, I guess, um, so they're tracking it a lot closer. And so we're more likely than not to be really close and probably over what we budgeted on the. Service fees.
How much is that?
Right now, I think we're, last I knew, we were about a thousand bucks less than what we budgeted, and we were just about halfway through their billables.
But what is the total amount?
Oh, we, I think we budgeted like three grand, I hope I'm out of my head.
Okay.
But that was based on past use and billing, and if they weren't. Getting a hundred percent, then our regulations would fall down, so their time, and we may see a.
This is not a discretionary item.
We have to provide it, if we don't appoint someone to do it, I believe that in this case the statute by default falls to the select board to do.
There's a couple of items that are newest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I've been the health officer, this is an explanation, but he looks like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You're like, I lean for assistance.
Pass that along.
I mean, I dominate there.
Great.
Very nice.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion to get this contract in here, so we're gonna.
Second?
I'll make a motion to, uh. Uh, yeah, approve the, uh, animal control, uh, A C O, uh, contract as presented, yeah. So, I think I hear a second before I made a motion, so we'll talk this. Talk of that one, all right, any other discussion on that item? Good, all those in favor? Okay, next, we have the common good grant application.
Well, this is you. So, grab E V stuff too, um.
This is you?
Let me provide some information, um, yeah, this is pretty simple, um, essentially just seeking. Uh, your endorsements that I can write a letter of intent for this grant, comes through Bowden's McKee Center, um, it's a four thousand dollar grant, so, you know, a little on the smaller side, but. It is a, a pretty interesting grant application process, um, in that it is Bowden students who are sitting on the committee to get them more involved with. The process of philanthropy and local nonprofits in the area, we, um, are able, are eligible for this grant, one, because we're in Lincoln County, two, because technically Bowden runs. A freshman orientation program to Damarus Gata, um, which is something that I have no idea about, and I would be surprised.
Once.
Anyone in, in, in Damarus Gata knew about, but this is a great opportunity for us to perhaps rekindle that relationship, um. So in the moment, we received our, uh, three ideas for rental projects that something of a grant of this size could contribute to, all of them have. Um, hot plan affiliations, uh, directly, um, so seeking your approvals, I think that's our system.
Um. Does it require that we pick one of those three as part of the grant application?
Uh. Yes, so the grant application has, um. Five different sections listed there that they want projects to fall into, um, and so. With what is aligning those scopes of interest versus what is in our comp plan and what could be most benefited by that some. Yes, the idea would be for you to pick one, um, I can write the letter of intent, and if that is approved.
Well, I would definitely recommend the Calvin Dodge or Cobble.
I, I, I agree with you. But on that, yeah, it's like, really old, yeah.
I thought it was.
My other three definitely, but this will have some. If, if. Burn, yeah, the board, please, the board, the Calvin Dodge stuff, yeah, that's.
And, and also, if they haven't finished the libraries, reserving some of the documents, or if there's still some other documents, that would be really helpful as well.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that that process is not finished yet, end of summer, so.
So, this would be great.
And Emerson, you said, how much was this?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, I saw the thirty thousand on the first one, wait.
And you can, it, it's in order, yeah, she, she has to write the grant for one of these, yeah, yeah. And you can reference the probably historical society as well as part of that.
Okay.
As another, um, sort of nonprofit in town that would be very interested.
Wonderful.
So, we'll be looking then, how you feel about, um. We have to pick one, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, the, the suggestion would have been the Calvin Dodge, um. I have a request for tonight, this in terms of a motion, would really just seeking your approval to submit, um. When three of us met last week, it was kind of like, these were the three projects that seemed most, for the dollar amount coming in, the readiness and. The lift, uh, these three projects stood out, that met the criteria, and that might be accomplished within that dollar value. Uh, but are also potentially started in some effort in part, so we just threw those three ideas and, um, we should be able to just see which was most ready. And so knowing your interest right now and priority of that one's helpful, um, just a couple more pieces of the puzzle to. Pull together.
There's, there's no question, it's not even in the same ballpark as far as priority.
Yeah.
A lot of history.
A lot of history.
So, so, I, so I'm, I'm all in favor of applying for the grant, so why not, and, um, and if you're looking for a motion for that.
To apply, yeah.
To apply, so.
Take it, Dan.
I, I make a motion to authorize the town to input key applications or apply for a grant through the common good. Grant application programs through Bowden College. Second, first with, there are seconds? Any discussion? Yeah, all those in paper? All right, awesome. Sounds good, Emerson, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're on to the, uh, yeah, charity policy, um. So we had a draft of this, uh, which, you know, we've, I've got a chance to take a peek at, and we had some pretty good discussion over it, um.
Changes that were discussed and agreed to are incorporated.
Hmm, oh, exactly.
Yeah, so, well, we've gotten some feedback from Revision Energy in terms of the handicap space.
Okay.
I shared what the board's reference was, um. And in terms of being kind of compliant with the space, the primary function of those spaces is for E V charging. In terms of like the grant and the purpose, and so, in that being, you know, they typically have signs made up, or it's. E V users handicap preferred essentially, other non-handicapped users as a last resort use that space. That's why I didn't get the handicap inked down, that was not exclusive for handicap parking, it meets the standards and compliance with the A D A requirements.
Okay.
Um, so their recommendation was that for, at least, you know, to show whether it's a year, a couple of year period, um, keeping it in that form. Uh, which would require. Us to just designate another place in the parking lot exclusively for handicap.
I tell you, the way it's written, it says, can be used for handicap as a last resort.
Um, that's what we talked about the last meeting.
I thought that's in there, I thought I read. Maybe not.
It's for non, uh, electric vehicle handicaps.
Like, I pulled the most recent version here.
It's always in the last.
Please, read him, please, okay. The first. Non-E V handicap vehicles may only park in this spot as a last resort, and all other non.
Yeah, it's really, right?
No.
That's, that is right, that last meeting, we had talked about letting it be a handicap parking.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm more, yeah.
It's okay, and then if, if they were E V is preferred, but if they weren't E V, that handicap users could use it, in this case it's.
E V primarily, it's a handicap, it's preferred, but non, non-handicap E V users could use it as a last resort, so there was a switch from what we.
Well, this handicap person, that's good enough.
Okay. Andy. So where? And, and did we address the overnight parking in being plugged in?
That's not.
Or it wasn't even just overnight, was it, it was just, it's staying there during the day.
Well, not, it's not.
Well, idle, idle time, and yeah, those are rates setting.
Those are different.
Yeah.
Little, slightly different issues.
There's not in there.
So, the overnight parking is not currently in the policy, um, that is something that Andy and I had discussed first, so the, the priority is we need to set. Um, the rate that we're gonna charge above the flat fee for kilowatt hours, and we need to understand, right now, the model for the budget, well. Is slightly up in the air as we are figuring out which C M P rate that we are going to choose, um. But is for a twelve-hour day, um, so, but a potential for if a car is gonna be having a three-hour charging period, for four cars to, to utilize it for. Now, we could expand that up to a twenty-four hour, um, period and run the calculations, it was a question of, do we have enough? Interest in the overnight parking, so it's not included in this policy, it would. From my understanding, be easy to amend, because it doesn't require another town meeting to do that, if we had the demonstrated interest in. Parking and had enough folks doing that reliably where we can put it in the policy, but I don't think we had a way.
So what happens if, let's say it's from eight to eight, is, I think, was that what the assumption was?
Yes.
But. But what if somebody pulls in at nine o'clock at night, are they gonna be able to use the charger?
Yes.
And we will charge them according to whatever the, the mains are.
But, but we're just silent on that.
Right now. Like overnight parking.
Yeah, we, we had discussed, Emmer, we discussed like, uh, uh, possibly like a, an overnight parking rate, something changing, yeah.
But maybe not an overnight parking rate, and, and they just park there overnight if they're, if they're plugged in.
Yeah, what, yeah. So they'll be used, I mean, I think the only, there are, it, it maybe, just to make sure I'm clear, um, we talked about twelve-hour period last meeting. In regards to our business model.
The numbers, right.
Three-hour.
Yeah.
Right, our business model, not based on a twenty-four hour period, we're trying to be conservative in what we might have for revenue, and so we were only, I had guided her only assume a twelve-hour. Period in terms of generating.
Yeah, but this is the, this is the policy, so.
Yeah, so, so.
This is, so there are two.
Right, currently, currently, I think I can answer it, so currently, with policy, if somebody parked there. Overnight, it would fall under the three-hour and idle time, so they, they would still be.
So I guess that's, I, I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, the policy, the policy is twenty-four hours.
Yeah, oh, see, see, as an E V user, you know, I get the three-hour parking, minimum parking, I mean, maximum parking during the day, like eight to eight.
Right.
Or, if that makes sense, but at night. You know, the three-hour parking doesn't make a lot of sense, because people park overnight anyways now, right? In the.
Some, yeah, some, yeah, yeah.
So, but if they're gonna be charged in, because I tell you, some of these bigger E Vs, you know, take ten hours, it can.
Well, right now, they, for the policy, they can do that. Um, it'll just revert to the idle time charging.
Well, but what I don't want to have happen is after three hours, the, the, the machine shuts off.
Exactly.
And if, if that's how it's gonna be programmed.
Well, go our intention would be.
Go to a different rate, Dan, we put it to a different.
My understanding of the machine would only stop providing electricity once the car's battery's full, which is gonna vary. Vehicle to vehicle, so we have not accounted for a significant shut-off time, because we know that people could be coming with very different battery capacities.
Sure.
So, yeah, exactly, it would switch to that rate of, they get the three hours from when they start, start with the I, add on the island fee for however long we choose to park.
Okay, so the final line is, they can, they can park there.
You can park there as long.
Yeah. Not gonna be a free B, it's just like the daytime rate.
Yeah, you can be, you can park there essentially as long as you want, as long as you're plugged in, right now, the policy.
He, he wanted to reduce rate, does he?
Oh, see, that's not, you didn't reduce it.
So, that's actually not my understanding, and my understanding was, is that you can only, um, even if you're not fully charged. After three hours, you need to get out of that spot. Because of the three-hour, um, parking.
Well, you'd be subject to potentially a ticket. But I mean, the unit, if you're, if you're in there, I mean, unless we set the, I don't even know if we can, but it's only three hours.
Oh, that's fine.
Because you're plugged in and you're at eighty percent, you stay plugged in.
Yeah. And I don't know why you still wouldn't get the thirty five cents or whatever.
And that rate changes after the three hour and goes to the idle time?
We we can set the when the only B kicks in, but yes, we would, we we can decide a grace period, decide.
Yeah, the policy of like ten minutes or something or.
Plugged in and they're charging and we're. And that's good. So and if it happens to be that nobody's enforcing the three hour limit and they go to five hours, because that's what they make take to charge. Would be after they're fully charged, you know, for what, ten minutes or fifteen or something?
Money would say.
Yeah, ten minutes in the policy.
So after that ten minutes, you're gonna start being charged at an idle time. And so if somebody who's there overnight and they get fully charged by midnight, let's say, they 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 can get charged for. Until they pick up their car, let's say, in the morning for eight hours of idle time.
Cause their car's still drawing some.
You gotta be plugged in, yeah. Yeah, okay. Uh that's a good question, though, that um those particular response, are they in the three hour? In the parking ordinance?
Well, if I was um.
Because that's a good question, I can't remember if those particular spots are encompassed.
If reality is not in, that's fine, if you can, you can stay charged for as long as you want, as long as you're, as long as you're.
Charging.
Charging, yeah, then that's a. Yeah, yeah, exactly, and that's how you're gonna maximize your.
I think like Emerson, we can, this can be easily amended, this is if we get it in place and you know, you get a six months or a year or even or whatever. And see how things play out, we can amend this to say, okay, now it was adjust to an overnight rate or something or. There's a lot we can do with this end.
It's in our best interest to encourage folks to charge overnight, impossible, right? If if we have people who are, you know, working at the hospital and have a driving EV and wanna plug in overnight. Right, if we have folks who live downtown and have an EV and wanna plug in overnight, this is great, we, you know. It's been in our minds that this is a pretty ideal location, we've gotten confirmation from the folks at Revision that this is this. I'm location of these chargers to be and not only for our downtown, but for folks traveling up. Route one, however, to Dan's point as a media user, we wanna make sure that this is clear to everybody. So if it requires an amendment now before we approve it, I wanna make sure that happens.
Well, I think where I get confused when I read it again, I don't know what page it is, but it's under the last page before you can see. It's the violations and penalties. The first one, electric vehicles parked over three hours for fees relative to this violation referred to fee schedule. And that said that, oh my god, they can only be logged in for three hours and then it's in the going, hmm, okay. And so maybe that, that's where I have a problem is, because they're gonna get a. This is a fee that will actually collect as opposed to. That, you know, if that, if, because it's really based on idle time, it's like when you're fully charged. And you're you're sticking around there for too long, we're gonna start charging it, yeah, and that's.
Yeah, and that's what the fee, they referenced the fee schedule that would be set in that.
Isn't necessarily gonna be the um the trigger though, it's gonna be the. When the car being fully charged.
So would you rather have a?
Well, no.
It is a three hour.
It's three hour, we're we're still limiting it, like, we're trying to keep folks. Rolling through there, so the three hour window is is the this a certain rate and then the fee schedule will kick in, like the increased rate would kick in after three hours. So if you wanna stay on there.
I don't know if, so that might make most sense to do is a, you know, day nine nighttime. Right, and then and then within that, we might have more versus trying to apply all those rules as a standard.
If you're a hundred percent after two hours or something.
Well, then you should get charged, you should get charged.
The fee rate, the the.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm I I get you, yeah, yeah.
Because if somebody's only gonna use an hour and then and then they're gonna say, I get three more, two more hours here. We don't want that either, because because you wanna free up the spot for for another EV.
But this can sense when the car is full, correct? So the issue here is if somebody needs ten hours, they pull in for three. And wanna stay for the rest, is that a, is that the regular flat rate for the ten and the day hours?
Or you just have one rate for the um for charging and um and and and. And fortunately, it self enforces the idle rate past the penalty. Right there, it's for being being charged for too long.
Well, if they automatically shut off, they don't need to put arbitrary three hours.
No, they it auto, no, once it's full, it it shuts off, but but it knows that you're plugged in. And and then that's when you start getting an idle time, I I hit with idle.
The piece we're not capturing is if someone unplugs and there's no idle fees collected, so someone just unplugs and they're getting in the spot.
They shouldn't be at the spot if if they're not.
Which is that's trying, which is part of that, yeah.
That is tricky though.
So PD already enforces that law per the parking ordinance, so. Eventually make an adjustment to that ordinance to incorporate EV.
So simply put, if they're not plugged in. And they're trying to avoid the idle fees, they just unplug and then unplug in the parking spots and that's takeable.
That should be. That should be the the parking. Taken violation as opposed to an idle charge.
Yeah, that's a that's a violation, a total violation, yeah.
And that should be a nice hefty one, too.
Right, I mean, would you rather there be, during the daytime. Thinking kind of different user than at nighttime and you would you rather there be a. Twelve hour day period where this is what's set in a twelve hour kind of evening period where the users are just gonna be a little bit different?
I think it's a fair question, and I would, I I just hope they're used, so. And so I would worry about rationing the spaces after a a period of experience. Like if we find a year from now that there's people waiting for the chargers, then I think we can institute a three hour period.
So can you?
Because you want the chargers used as.
Accelerate the charge on idle, you know, if they're idling or or. The fee ran ramps up over time if they're already fully charged.
Yeah, not sure.
With the with the actual contractor, I think it does vary.
Incent incentivize person to get the heck out of.
Right.
And it goes the penalty coming, the charge penalty.
Right, and so we'll have signage uh posted that does refer to the idling penalty with the amount and with the um. Time limit and we have a pretty um. Gentle idling fee, um talking with other folks who are charging around mid coast Maine, I was talking to someone who drives an EV. Played paid a flat rate for shopping in Freeport, it was a had with the amount of time she was there uh. Like ninety dollars was gonna be the total time and then I was hit with an island being ended up paying close to two hundred dollars. Or, yes, uh so we are.
And not to beat it up, but just curious, if somebody pulls in and they're charged and plug in, does that automatically go right title? Does that automatically start an idle charge if they?
If they're already fully charged?
Yeah, if he pulled down from his house and said, I'm getting my prime parking spot.
Well, it it knows, I mean, the the screen will read out your, when you plug in, oh, you're at thirty percent charge, it's gonna take you. Um six hours to get to a hundred, or if you're at eighty percent, it says it's gonna take you an hour.
We have an island.
I was okay, it's the unplugged ones.
Right, those are the ones, yeah.
Issue is really that during the day, you just wanna limit it to three hours and I'm not sure you do, as long as they're plugged in and charged.
I think you're right, I think once, it's really gonna be time tell.
That would be a good problem.
We could also refer to that.
I just interrupted for a minute, so part of this is we we first, we need to find out whether or not those spots are. Accomplished in the parking ordinance right now as three hour parking, because if they are. We're already limited to that and we'd have to change that in the parking ordinance. So we know that in front of us right now, we're gonna follow up on that, so I I I'm, I think if we just go back to a non limited time, but if it's already in the ordinance.
Well, might I suggest that we're losing revenue already because those things are operational, right?
Just blow us, he's gotta still set up some stuff.
He's got the base fee of having power there, so it's like currently the rate that we're in right now is like forty five bucks for the month, and if there's no power draw, then there's no additional cost.
But people going there right now can get shoots, right?
Parking rates. It has like, you have like uh. Latitudes and direction.
Yeah, well, what we had dropped in the last meeting to review was, you know, create identifying those spots in Taco Alley as EV. Parking spots, the current ordinance, I don't think referenced the two EV spots that were in there. And so we were just designating that alleyway, all of those spots there to be EV charging spots and then try to refer to the. To the policy as much as possible for kind of the specifics and user um.
Yeah.
Rules and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so if it if it doesn't reference those as three hour parking spots, good to go, we're good to go. What what we just talked about, if it does, we would, if in order to enact the policy now, we would have to have three hour in there. Would have to be congruent with the um with the. With Dan Charlotte right now, yeah, where he's going, he's on spot.
So far, I haven't found anything referencing three hours, yeah. It's not in the municipal parking that first one, oh, here we go. I municipal parking, that general parking regulations set forth in section three point two shall be enforced from morning to late every day. There shall be three hour parking, even municipal parking off on six to six. It doesn't say where, though.
Well, it's not really in the law.
Technically.
It's not, it's on a different, that's a different road. You have parking outline. And you have Taco, I think we could go. That's how we interpret it.
I think it's in the best interest of the town, I think it is.
I think in the next meeting, I'll have it in front of you to to consider changing properly.
So we need to find out for sure, but that's, yeah, I think we're on agreement, it makes sense now, the discussion that it shouldn't, yeah, it could be open ended because we. Idle fee and it makes, yeah, it makes more sense in that way, yeah. It's 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 up when your own ordinance is getting in your way and you have to. Everybody has to.
By the way, savory Maine doesn't exist anymore and fish market should be similar to fish market, I think we ought to get away from. That's fine, that was what I was gonna say, alright.
So as it stands right now, we need to table this until. We can be sure of the. Parking ordinance.
I thought your interpretation of the ordinance currently written was to kind of allow it.
Yeah, I'd rather that. Yeah, just try to get your way in.
I the only thing I do is maybe take out that one violation of three hours piece and just take it out and then the. Rest of it's gonna be the piece.
So if 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 we can, if if the way we're reading yours right now, it doesn't. If if we look at the parking lot proper, because I don't think it has, if you haven't run it. Then the uh it doesn't have the um. Pins and measurements and there's no map, so if we can do the parking lot proper, you have parking lot lane, now we have Taco Alley, which is a separate. Road, separate, make it work. Legal castle is near, right? Gonna give a call, um, yeah, that's that's the base then, the three hour, right, that three hour. Which is a fee schedule anyway, so.
Dan's ready to give a motion on that.
I guess my last question, though, sorry. Gonna drive you crazy tonight, so um the idling charge, you reckon I need three dollars an hour?
Yes, based based on, again, and that is something we can change at at any point. It is, and so we're we're hoping, it it is somewhat on the honor system for folks, some vehicles. And this was a discussion we also had around safety and accessibility, if there was flooding in the parking lot, there's a fire or whatever and people are. Uh locked in, right, not done charging, uh a lot of EVs will auto lock around um. The actual charger and it's not something that we would be able to undo ourselves on the outside, it's not something that the fire department can come in. Um so we were trying to figure out, okay, how can we make sure that there is. A penalty but not discourage people from still spending time in downtown area, going out to eat, shopping, so we're starting with a gentler. Um rate especially because uh other towns in mid coast, um Bath especially has had a lot of active feedback on rates being too high. They uh that that I was more for their kilowatt hour.
Three uh three dollars an hour is not gonna cause you to move on, well, no, but I think if you see a high abuse, like any of these topics we've discussed.
Yeah, but the rates are not in the policy anyway, so I think that it was.
Well, the the three hour, three dollar.
Part part of the idle fee too is acknowledging that someone's not staying there longer and isn't allowing the next person in. It's different, but you know, if you're if you're running a gas station and your goal is to sell gallons of gas and the purpose. It's too full, right, make money, but also get the next person to. If someone's just there idling, it's kind of a lost opportunity for the next user and so it's meant to try and in some way to like recover. In part, what we would have otherwise made from them, but.
But.
But in general.
Look at the data to see how many people are. We gotta get reports out of the system to tell us the the nature of the usage um. By by station, you know, I mean, people are idling for six hours or whatever.
We should be.
Right, well, then I I would say, let's move on and.
I think that's fine, so I'll make a motion to approve the the policy as written except for number one violation. Um take that out and um remove that, so we can start. Making money.
I'll work that a little bit differently, but yes.
Alright, so Dan's Dan's made a motion um to approve the policy minus the uh. Number one under violations and penalties. Alright, I need a second, Tom, in a second, okay, any other discussion, those in favor?
Well, I have a serious question about the idling.
Or we just went through, right right now, I need a vote, because we just went through discussion. Okay, so yeah, so any, all is opposed. Alright, one opposed, motion carries, alright, let's move on. Just did that one. Oh, the roundabout, yeah. Roundabout to the roundabout.
Looks like we have no choice.
Do we do? Just say no.
Can I go back to my first question, it was, what do we think it will cost us to to operate or maintain and?
They estimated the electrical usage cost uh at twenty two hundred a year. Over twelve, I believe there's twelve fixtures there and they're assuming a hundred watt, I'm telling you, a hundred watt fixtures, which are. But if you, again, you're assuming hours and use and you're trying to figure exact, so it's about twenty two hundred bucks a year. Which is pretty close to what we currently afford ourselves for power costs for all of our street, like in town in a year. So I told them, like, we don't, we'd have to go to town meeting in order to um have the money to be able to pay this. And we didn't budget, our budget's not looking for that line where it sits in the budget, uh the article's approved. It's with the fire department, EMA and traffic lights, so it's like it's such a tight budget anyways. There's no contingency within that article to really take on another thousand dollars plus for half the year, the maintenance, I don't know. I mean, right now, the company we use um to come and do some work on the lights, this we just had a year yesterday. And there's different ones out there, but been able to work with them for a while, they're like fifteen hundred bucks a day. So I usually wait until there's five or six or a good day's worth of work because then the cost per fixture go down, they're starting that charge five hundred a light. And if you only got the one you needed done, bring them in, and so it's, yeah, but it's it's a high cost for a light now. And, you know, the hope is that you don't have to worry about them, but the reality is there's some that. You just get ripped and things happen and they have, there was no way for us to figure them. The maintenance part is really the one that's got me a little concerned in terms of like budgeting cost and is there. I asked them and they did get back to me, they said, is there a minimum timeframe in which we must replace fixed failed light? Um and you see in the contract there, they do hold the ability to go and do it if we don't do it soon enough. Now, they said they've never really seen it take more than forty eight to, you know, seventy two hours to get a company in to deal with it. Um it's just a matter of like now, we're kind of obligated to.
Right, because you can't really set up a maintenance schedule for these, I mean.
You'd have to have an agreement, I think, with the company to come in and respond as needed, I would think. You'd have to have an agreement, I think, with the company to come in and respond as needed, I would think, if we're having to do it at a certain interval. Whereas right now, I mean, if they want unpleasant, so thanks for the folks who made the patient, but I mean, that would have been up to February. Earlier this year, just did it yesterday, it didn't make sense to have one that high fee for one light, so we don't, we have enough now that we did it. So I worry about that, I don't know, is there a way to ask the state to deal with the maintenance of them or not, and we just deal with power potentially?
What's um, I don't think any of them, like like. What's the, is this normal, the presidents of this, um, is I, you know, the. I I don't recall, this was never discussed in our initial meetings with DOT, the engineers, this is not something that was brought up. At all about the town having any inherent costs in this project whatsoever, right, um. And this seems kind of like a backend, like the the project's been out and it's been a couple of years in in. Development, the money was set aside and then this feels like this M M dot just throws that, so hey, by the way, you're gonna pay for.
That's why they put this two thousand four agreement in there.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that was for the flashing, you know, he told me, oh, we're just building on, and the the agreement essentially in principle and. The one agreement was that, and he shared that, so what's the math, they all forgot difference from one flashing light and however many other lights are gonna go up there um that'll run. Yeah, well, the flashing light's gone, if that one's now gone, yeah. Yeah, that's gone, this is, yeah, so that there's no. So completely, it's kind of bringing that back now, we did say, you know, in his letter there, that is kind of the norm. Uh this wasn't a a partnered project and some of the other ones, like some of the other ones we're doing. I did call Wiscasset in the whole world, because they've got three lights out of some of their intersections along Route one.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and I remember and right now, one of the differences CMP owns the lights in the whole world. Uh okay, my understanding, and so like they'll do the maintenance, but the town pays for power. And Wiscasset, some of those traffic lights and such, the town pays for power and someone else deals for maintenance. I think like paying the power isn't the big one here, it's the maintenance stuff.
Well, I mean, that one can add up quite hard, depending on. So I mean, in theory, you shouldn't have to deal with it, they shouldn't blow, I mean, refuse, I mean, if a fuse trips, it's all over the matter, but I mean. With LEDs, the whole benefits, you should replace the bulb itself, but the sensors go, the connectivity goes, and it looks like there's power loss, I guess, and someone out there anyways. Um so that the maintenance part for me, and then and then you get the whole traffic control plan in place when someone's out there working. Um and they want us to come up with that and I I just wouldn't ask it, maybe we ask them to do the maintenance part of it.
Did we ask those flashing lights in there?
Long time ago.
No, no, I mean, the the new ones.
Well, it almost seems like an oversight.
Yeah, I mean, I saw the roundabout, I used.
These are, these are old red streetlights.
Oh, these are just overhead.
Yeah, there's the.
There were some flashing lights there.
The flashing light's gone, or roundabouts there, and these are a different setup, so um, but it yeah, it to, it just, one two, like. What if we don't sign? Uh what's 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 the risk, we just say no, you know, um what are we? I can share. What do you got? I can share that with them if that's the position of the board. Well, I think, you know, everybody, I think. The the question there is like, okay, the other part of it too is is we're working on some other stuff with M dot. Going up through here and and you're working the same, yeah, I'm not. Where where do we push and where don't we push, yeah. I I I think, like you suggested, the two, the big differences are, one in the power, but then in the maintenance side of it. Especially if we don't have ownership, you know, they're still taking ownership.
Separate issue though. Would be better just to pay them to put it, um even though it might cost a little more, because practically speaking. That's their forte and we don't have this.
State state's not doing. State contract, the same. Yeah.
Alright. But they may get a better price because they have so much.
They most likely have a better response time and things like that, maybe for a statewide contract, but um.
Well, we could go back with that, ask them then where where it costs it from.
They did the maintenance. I recommend you ask if they'll do the maintenance, we'll pay the power if they're feeling.
I I think that's. Yeah, you know, I can see the pushback too from putting another budget line in or adding to the budget line for maintenance and the question, this is non, we're maintaining. The legality of maintaining non town owned property too, or property, you know, first uh uh personal property like. You know, we don't have ownership there, what's the legality there of of budgeting to maintain property that doesn't belong?
Yeah.
And we're in trouble, we can't pave on a certain thing sometimes without getting, like, there's gonna be some legality there. Okay, so.
Isn't, I don't know what you said Wiscasset does. Dennis said when the traffic lights were, we paid for the maintenance of and power for traffic lights here, but he said where they are. They do the power cost and someone else deals with it, which I thought.
That's as bad, but if that's more normal on our area at the moment, I'd be trying to go that route.
Right. Uh I think at this moment, then try and.
Yeah.
Do all of it.
Yeah, I think there are any of us approached it that way.
Okay, so essentially taking.
Yeah, I would say fine, throw that out there, diplomatic discussion and see how. Yeah. And okay. Is that it for official action? We just not get at the end? Good, alright, um well, with that, uh we can turn it over to uh. Slapboard discussion, if anybody has anything they wanna throw up there, we can start. Tom, go, Andrew, yeah.
Real real quick, uh pulling Andy's out, this is a re- a proposed interlocal agreement change document.
Yeah, okay.
For the ambulance service and. I read that and throw it back to the end, the last page, which is the revision of the pricing, but um. I'm gonna call into Nick because that was not discussed at the meeting, you know, everybody got these handouts, nobody brought it because we're in the meeting. But when I got home and looked at it, uh that would be to have a significant impact on us, anyway, I think though. This is the 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 document itself without the appendix. Is something we ought to move forward with because it allows them to. Get retirement benefits where they don't don't allow now and puts them in a more competitive basis for recruiting. So this this document is based on another town that successfully successfully. Achieved getting those benefits by virtue of their in a local agreement. And so as modeling that, uh I read it's pretty straightforward. But I've asked Nick to also send the copy of the the other town's document. So and also the right, the crossouts and the changes between the two. And I recommend that we give the three pieces of those documents to our attorney just to make sure that. There's nothing we're concerned about. So the separate issue is gonna be the 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 last page.
Exhibit A?
Yeah.
So we're we're, the current interlocal is, when does that come up?
Well, they're trying to make this happen by January one for benefits, for the accruing of benefits for um retirement benefits.
Okay.
They've been trying to fight, they've been fighting this for three years, we brought it up before. Trying to get the benefits and they were told they couldn't, you know, the way we were constructed. We were not really, wasn't our emergency department, it was an independent department overlooked by a board, whatever. But the changes here, they the towns are managing and they're assigning. The operation to this entity, but the towns are running the the show. And legally, that allows them to get benefits.
Okay, but the the current, do we know when the current interlocals expires?
I I I don't think, no, I don't, I don't think it has an expiration date, but um.
Thought I thought we, yeah, I thought I had a.
Period, five year, yeah, and so to reconsider it in that five year period.
Okay.
Um but that would be different than typically than like the.
The interlocal separate period.
Except for the fact that it has a rate structure.
Well, now, yeah.
It's different, but it's.
He hasn't called me back, let's put it that way, I asked him a question. But I know that there was, you know, there's been a complaint by both South Bristol and Bristol for a long time, and every every time we have a meeting, it still comes out. And there was a plan to start looking at a new thing, but this is a proposed.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think uh they're not looking for a signature now, right?
No, no, but I, like I said, once I get the other two documents, I'll send it to you too. And uh I would recommend that we give it to our lawyer to make sure the interlocal part of it is okay.
Cause that right there doesn't look like a full version of it, cause we go from the first page with the wear ass now there. The next page starts with number three, and the seventh, the third page starts with five, so I think there might be some page that might not be there.
Alright, well, I'll ask them about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Draft change, sure, and that also be managed too.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, so each town shall be assessed annually to share the gross assessment in accordance with the formless support in exhibit C attached here too.
The tax one basis, the tax basis.
Only.
Yeah, only.
Although your your share of the sum of all of the towns uh total state evaluation.
The biggest, the the biggest problem was that all the calls, the majority are in Deans Scott, so. To get around that, Deans Scott is paying the lion's share of everybody's s- service.
Yeah.
Or something else.
It always, it always shifts around uh.
But I don't understand why they, it can't be based on where the people live.
Cause you.
Cause they can't get that information during the call.
Don't do that, cause I mean, you've got people that don't live in any of the member towns, you know. Walderboro here, you've got people from. It's 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 similar, it's police response and it's E and and T, right, so your your police department shows up and somebody has an accident in Deans Scott. They don't assess, you know, lives in Walderboro, they don't assess Walderboro for the, so it's, yeah, there there's no. There's no town boundaries with with emergency management, you know, same thing with fire.
We're a service center, I mean, worse, that happens in the service center.
Yeah.
I mean, local businesses, falls.
You should leave school street in the morning.
Yeah, 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 so it's, okay, so I think we need. Yeah, a complete document, Tom.
Mother decided to consider is that. The hospitals in Deans Scott and the the ambulances live in Deans Scott, so if you're gonna look at pure mileage. It costs a lot less to service Deans Scott than it does to drive all the way down to South Bristol and all the way back up, so. Like for Deans Scott, if you take down lion's share of costs, this seems unfair.
Yeah, but and then, in, your point, and but then that's how you look at it, go, their response time is slow. So they say like, well, Deans Scott is, you know, their response time is thirty second, but it's it's thirty minutes to get, so I know, I I agree, but it's like.
They know they can't create their own service.
Well, there's there's an additional cost to them on top of the service cost too, because they all run. Most of the other towns around us that are part of CSC also run first responders.
They do.
And they typically get their, depending on where it's in those towns, before the CSC handles us, they just aren't transporting agencies. Uh but they are sending in addition, they're.
They do, yeah, yeah, first of all, first of all, the first responders.
Take a long time to get out of Hemet Point, so, yeah.
Yeah.
They that's that's, and being mindful of that, like, how do you find that? Fair, and we're gonna have similar conversation in different regions and different foundations that are on public works potentially too.
How do you find that fair?
Yeah.
Well, we've spent, you know, as you know, spent a lot of time on this, and Josh was involved too, and there's no two answers, there is not.
I I think it comes back, as we were saying, thinking against one large community, maybe it's five or six towns. It gets, it's just a, it's a service center, but this is just a hub of this large community, so.
That's where the weighting could come into some way there, I mean, like maybe there's certain things like call volume could be weighted a little bit differently than valuation or. You know, cause I think they were equal thirds last time.
I I I I suggested it before, I said two thirds population and and one third tax valuation, they don't even consider. The 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 call, where the.
Yeah, the call, the call.
Originating, that was that's trying, so. Cause you know that, you know, all these people are coming in, as we all know, to Deans Scott every single day, I mean, this this, this is just where they come.
Yeah.
Well, the debate on that is gonna happen later, but nevertheless, uh we don't wanna approve that to help them. With that attachment as it stands. So I'll get those two things, you guys, you guys decide if you wanna give it to the lawyer, but I would recommend to go to the lawyer.
Okay, yeah, the the bulk of that.
Not the not the attachment, I mean, that's.
Right, the remainder in the word. Alright, anybody else have anything this evening? And Sarah? Pretty good, okay. Yeah, so you get things to sign down that end, um and then uh we'll do that, I'll uh. Dan, what's your adjournment? I'll make it. No, I'm second, any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, so he designed some paperwork, I was getting, I'm sorry, right.